Welcome to the public hearing for the road commissioner ordinance and the road committee ordinance. For those that came in while we were still having our other meeting, we sat down with the board of selectmen, the road committee, and the road commissioners, and went down line by line through the both ordinances to get some concerns and some questions. So, and that was a workshop. So this is the first of most likely two public hearings that we're going to have. The next public hearing will be held, we don't have an exact date, it's going to be mid-May sometime, it needs to be held 30 days out from the vote. The vote is the 18th of June. So, there was a little confusion about a vote here tonight. There is no vote here tonight. This is strictly informational. So with that, you should have, and this will be the one we're working off of tonight, we're going to start with the road committee ordinance. It's the one marked 422-19. So if you have one that says watermark on it, 422-19, that's the one that is available here to be handed out tonight. That's the one we're working off of. That was redone just minutes ago with some suggestions from the road commissioners and the road committee, and ourselves all working together to put together a good working document. So, just to make sure everybody's got the one that's marked 0422-19, 2019. So if you have that, okay, that one, the one we're doing right now is the road committee ordinance. We're not going to go line by line on these. You folks can read what they say, but we will just run down through the titles, you know, the bold print. So you have a title, you know, this is the road committee, the road committee ordinance. Otherwise, this is going to be called the ordinance. Authority. It's adopted pursuant to Title 30A. Purpose is just to explain exactly what the road committee is. It's an advisory board. Like I say, you can read down through there. They work with the road commissioners and the board of selectmen. Organizational and structure of the meetings. It's going to be formed of seven members. Five of the members are elected at town meetings, three of which, you know, there are staggered terms, bottom line. So it's going to be a seven-member board, five of which are elected at town meeting, and the other two members, and they are voting members, are the road commissioners. If there's no objections, we'll, you know, you can look down through that. Duties, you want to just give a highlight on those?
Sure. We just kind of touched on duties here. Turnaround easements, bridges, coordinating with appropriate budding towns in the planning of bridge repairs and construction to make recommendations. And then number three is review. This has to do with MRSA 3106. It's the applications for the road associations regarding Article 43. They would make recommendations to the board of selectmen before we...
Pay out.
Pay out, thank you. Having a brain block. Also, to take care of the RSMS, the Road System Maintenance System. They complete the gathering of data to keep it, keep the system up to date, and they'd work with the town administrator to maintain the records for that. Research report on any grants related to roads, bridges, and culverts in conjunction with the board of selectmen. Bring forward recommendations of outside workshops or training to the board of selectmen for prior approval. Regulations? Regulations is the next one. So we put, we have three different regulations on the committee. The committee has no purchasing authority without the approval of the majority of the board of selectmen. Number two, the committee shall not communicate on behalf of the town of Acton unless it is as an advisory road committee with any outside agencies without the prior approval of this committee in advance. All correspondence among road committee members shall include the town administrator. Want to go over number two again? Read that, Elise.
Number two?
Number two. Does it make sense to you?
It's just basically, instead of having the committee talk on behalf of the town to outside agencies, they would be talking on, speaking on behalf of the road committee if they need to research any grants and ask questions so that it's not, they're not putting the town in any obligation by communicating with the outside agencies, they're doing it as a road committee member.
We wrote down the responsibility of the chairman. This isn't just for this committee. You know, we want to try to do this for all the committees so that when you get new members, like with, we have a whole new...
Rec.
Rec committee, and there were no guidelines or bylaws or structures. So, so we're going to try to incorporate, you know, these in every, you know, every committee that we have. This is, just happens to be the first one we're doing, so...
These are all, the next three really are kind of a boilerplate to, that could be used for any of the committees.
Just how to run your meetings and...
Yep.
Responsibilities of the positions, chairman, vice chair, the secretary, and then how to deal with the vacancy.
Yep. So the vacancies, if the opening of a committee position due to member resignation or any other reason, term expires, shall be filled at the next, filled in the following manner. Member of the public shall be appointed by the board of selectmen to serve as a, serve in the remainder of the original term. It's pretty, pretty basic, pretty simple. Changes, any changes to said ordinance must be adopted at an annual town meeting, which means we can't do a, you couldn't do a special town meeting, you couldn't do anything like that. Needs to be once a year at the annual town meeting. So any changes to this really, that keeps it to being a good, concise, and thought-out change. Effective date, the effective date of this ordinance will be adopted, approved by the secret ballot, June 18th, 2019, and shall supersede any and all previous adopted documents regarding the road committee. So I mean, that's a, it's a kind of a quick synopsis of it, but, you know, that's the, that's the road committee ordinance as presented. Like we said, this will be adopted, will be voted on on the 18th at the, at the town meeting, so, in the ballot box.
At the ballot.
At the ballot box. Back when, a few months ago, you know, we had, we were looking at doing either a, we were looking at doing many different things, either full-time road committee, full-time department head, a elected road commissioners, one, elected two road commissioners, or we were trying to look at doing appointed road commissioners. So during that whole process, the one thing that came out was, basically two things came out. We didn't have an ordinance for road commissioners or the road committee. The road committee had one. It was done in 2002, I believe it was, a long time ago.
Outdated.
Yeah, so it was outdated, needed to be updated. So this is the updated one for the road committee. So I mean, I'm just basically telling you, why are we doing this? We basically were asked. We listened to the public, they said, "This is something that we'd like to see you folks have," you know, "and have in place." So, and it does give better concise guidelines as to what both of these jobs are. And we do have job descriptions for pretty much every other department in town. This was, the road commissioners was one that was missing, and the road committee one, like I say, was outdated and needed to be updated, so. I guess at this time, I'd like to open it up to questions. We're going to follow the, basically the same guidelines we use for all our meetings. Try to hold your questions to, you know, one question until everyone has spoke their piece, and then you can come back up. We're pretty much using the three-minute rule. Go for it, so. Open it up to the public. Who'd like to, whoever, if anybody's got any questions, come on up. Or if a member of the, if the chairman of the road committee would like to get up maybe and give a two-minute or 30-second synopsis as to what we did earlier tonight and where we are right now with this one here. So, not to put you on the spot there, but, should we have all the time?
I'm not timing her.
No, you're not timing her, no, no.
I'll stick around, road committee. I really disliked the original ordinance that was, that was written.
Please speak up.
I originally disliked the original ordinance that was written. I felt we had made, I felt we made a lot of progress this evening in, in doing a rewrite. So at this point, I'd like to hear what the public has to say and questions they have as I, you know, do my due diligence and think about the changes that we talked about and we made. And, you know, the, the public is an important part of the process, so I'd like to hear what they say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we want to switch mics up front there. Just grab any one of these, take it up. I think that'll reach.
Will reach.
Those seem to sound better.
Hey, John Botell. The only thing I would say is that under Regulation Number Two, doesn't seem to make any sense at all. It's, it's literally saying that the committee won't communicate something unless the committee agrees it, which is kind of implied anyway, because they wouldn't be doing that in that case. It just seems that the language, I don't disagree with the, the idea of it, it's just the language seems clumsy.
It does, and it, that was one that we did restructure the sentence on, and as I read it, I thought, "This could be worded better."
Right, yeah.
So, yeah, definitely could be worded a little smoother.
Sure, yeah. That was it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Must be some other folks out there that have, I mean, it's a lot to be thrown at you one night, you know, it's a rewrite, but it's not, you know, it's not a huge rewrite, so...
The, Dave Wenchel, juniors. Now, my question is, at the end of this, on June 18th, say this fails, what's the plan after that?
Well, where there already is one, for the road committee, then it reverts, nothing changes.
Now, usually at town meeting, we do this. I do agree with the idea of having a special ballot, because I've seen too many articles that you can start picking amend in, doing this and that to get what you want by bombard town meeting, and it's been done a few times. But should there be, myself, the last time we voted on this, on the road committee itself, was back in, what was it, 2000?
2002 there was one.
No, no, it was recent, it was recent. We, we had a vote on...
Was it the first year?
It was 2012.
I think it was 12 that we, we put the vote to whether or not to have the road committee or not.
Right, right. It was a little after that, it might have been 13 or 14.
Yeah, it was the year, last year, Loresse Crockett was, so whatever that was.
12, that was 12.
Yeah, okay.
Because I came in in June of 12.
So, my suggestion is, you know, so we don't have to keep circling the wagons here, is if, on this warrant, we should have an additional question here, whether or not this passes or fails. If this fails, there should be an exit plan, meaning either to get rid of the road committee.
Good thought. I don't think we're quite at that point. You know, we did, was a question that was asked in 2012. I think with a good working document like this, we can, you know, it can be a good, the road committee can be a viable thing, so, and I'd like to, you know, just keep chugging ahead here and see, see if we can make it work.
Great. Just to that point, I have something here from MMA Municipal that was establishing a road committee. Says here, "A road committee is advisory in nature, appears to be most needed in towns which do not have their own road equipment. They are seen as a way to take the politics out of paving, arguing the road committees are apolitical and therefore will de-politicize the decision-making process. Advocates say that the committee, if wisely chosen and directed, will end the rule by favoritism and the squeaky wheel. The cost is too great to leave the decision to political preference or whim. The road commissioners are traditionally not administrators, they drive trucks and run equipment. Road committees, rather than being adversarial of the road commissions, are there to ease their burden, providing them with extra eyes, ears, legs, as well as planning capabilities." That was from MMA 1991.
Thank you. I think a lot of what you just said is in this document, and it, it tends to try to tie it all together, so. Anyone else? Only once. It always gets people, always brings, always brings up, always brings up the gavel.
We tend to double team, too. Joyce Bachy, "I was just a little confused, well, that's why I'm here, to learn things. If this passes, the current road committee is gone, null and void, correct?"
Yes, if this, just, let me, let me answer that question for you. If this passes, the current road committee members, as they sit today, are gone, and at the town meeting that Saturday, will be voted for five new road committee members. Could be the same five.
Right.
But, yes.
But there'll be another election.
Yes.
What, if that happens to the road committee, we have one road commissioner now. I think we can call Joe a road commissioner.
Yep.
Is he done?
Nope.
If the road commissioner one passes?
If the road commissioner one passes, they, Jennifer has the answer to that one. I don't remember the exact answer. I think it is the same exact thing.
If it's the same exact thing, then he's gone too until Saturday.
We'll have, yeah.
Why, why should he be gone?
I'll have to get, I'll, we'll have to get clarification on that.
I think it depends on how we, how we term the effective date at the bottom and...
I'd like to know, because it shouldn't, it shouldn't affect, I mean...
Shouldn't affect the road commissioners.
No, but it should also be equal.
Yep.
Right, that makes sense.
And it's not equal, if it's any other way, whether it's, the current board is gone or stands, or, Joe's been through enough. He does not need to go through this whole thing again.
No.
And, you know, it's got to be, I'm not saying I want left or right, or up or down. I want it to be equal and fair.
Okay. We will get you an answer to that.
Tomorrow.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe Jennifer is actually typing up the other one as we speak.
Oh, it's here.
Never mind, I already have it.
Tomorrow, we should be able to...
Did she leave?
Yes.
Oh, okay. We'll have to get you that answer tomorrow. So, we will get it. Go ahead.
Gavin Maloney. I just had a couple things I thought you might want to think about. I'm holding the comprehensive plan right here. It does refer to the road committee in a couple sections. Page nine dash 27. Strategies number one, it says, "Conduct a thorough review of town records to determine the legal status of those roadways depicted as abandoned on the transportation infrastructure map." And it says, "Responsibility, road committee and selectmen." Then number two, "Develop an official town road inventory incorporating the information discovered in the review of legal status," which is what I just read above. Of course, it does give a timeframe for those, but I feel like, since we haven't really, perhaps that would want to be integrated into the road committee ordinance.
Some of that...
Would that be the road system maintenance system?
The RSMS system.
Which they've gone out last, last year and collected all the data on the roads and stuff with that, I know.
Right, I, I think that's more of the condition of the roads, not their legal status, right?
So you want, you're looking to add that duty back in, I mean, into this job description because it was once theirs?
Okay.
We don't have a lot of documents to work with to determine what the road committee is supposed to do, but I do feel like we should use the comprehensive plan. We got that one. There was a couple more, which you did pretty much cover in the ordinance. There was, right here, "Schedule funding for bridge improvements on a regular basis for the three town-maintained bridges to achieve and maintain a federal sufficiency rating of 60 or greater." Says coordinate with Milton, New Hampshire as appropriate for those two bridges located on the border. And I think you covered a lot of that. There was one thing I drew out of that, I guess, since Mills Road and Fox's Ridge Road are maintained by the state, we don't deal with those bridges. Is that why I'm getting two bridges instead of four bridges?
Right.
Okay. And then also, just lower on that same page, it says, "Encourage the use of park and ride lots in Acton, also under the road committee purview." Could be a good idea. I think that was most of what I saw in here, but there's definitely more, more work to be done, I feel like.
Maybe we could just have a, have a section in the ordinance that references...
The comp plan?
The comp plan.
Comp plan.
Yeah. Rather than taking the paths of the comp plan and putting it in the ordinance, do it the opposite way.
Yeah.
Reference the ordinance to...
The comp plan?
The comp plan.
Okay.
Could be, but maybe that would be a good time for me to ask you, as the selectman, to organize a comprehensive plan committee, because I'm pretty sure it's in your purview to do that, because this document needs to be updated.
Okay.
And in order to do that, we need to form a comprehensive plan committee. So I, I wouldn't necessarily feel comfortable in falling back on this document, because it's kind of been swept under the rug a little bit. I'd rather see that put into the, into the road committee ordinance.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind, could you copy those pages and highlight it for us?
Sure, yeah, I can get, get that for you. In the, in the back of the comprehensive plan, there's all these responsibilities and timeframes, like the planning board, selectmen, rec department, road committee. And I think I found all the ones for the road committee, but I may not have, because it's over, you know, then there's like other sections. So, yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea to, to organize into it, you know, like I say, reference the comp plan.
According to the comp plan.
Yep, yep. And that also gives them more duties.
Right, those more things.
Lots more duties.
Yeah, I forgot the, that they had been, in the, one of the old...
Right.
...ordinances to make recommendations for proposed roads as townways.
Yep.
Town roads, so...
Anyone else? Once again, this is the road committee ordinance. Not seeing anyone else. Everyone is happy with it, well, I won't say happy with it, but if everyone is okay with, with what we've gone through so far on this, we'll move on to the road commissioner ordinance. Once again, if you see things in here that you think should be added, subtracted, you know, changed wording, forward it to the town administrator, and she'll make sure we gets it, we get it, and we'll send it off to the road committee as well, and the road commissioners, and look to see what can be done. So, okay. Let's move on to the road commissioner one. This one is a little more in-depth, there's one, two, three, four pages to it. So, start off, this is the road committee, road commissioner ordinance. The authority, the ordinance is adopted by MRSA, different, different ones, I'm not going to cite them, they're right in print in front of you.
Well, while you're talking about that, the sections in the MRSA, these were copy and pasted from other suggestions from people in other town sites. So, a lot, all of these references to section numbers in the MRSA need to be run by legal or looked into, I mean, just don't take them to heart tonight, I guess.
Yep.
That they haven't been researched.
Right, that town administrator was going to ship it out and have, have legal take a look at it, just to make sure they're all, that nothing contradicts itself or, or contradicts laws and the way we, the way our plans are. So the purpose of the ordinance is to provide clarity about the position of the road commissioner for the town of Acton. Under definitions, an emergency, an emergency is defined as any incident which could immediately endanger life and/or property. Then we have general provisions. Go ahead.
Election and term of office. The position of road commissioner shall be filled by the public election at the annual municipal election. The term of the office shall be a period of three years. Then we'll go on to section two. Do we want to go down through all of these?
Just, we can just highlight them like we did before. I mean, it's...
We went through the job responsibilities with the road commissioners, the road committee, and ourselves tonight also.
I mean, one of the biggies is, is item five. The road commissioners must, must plan ahead and discuss all repairs, maintenance, and other projects with the selectmen. This includes developing a work schedule detailing the work to be done, the cost estimate for the work, and the location of the work. Schedule will be adhered to except in situations of emergencies. Case of sudden damage to town roads, ways, or bridges, the road commissioner must, without delay, repair them. In these emergency cases, prior approval from selectmen is not required. So in other words, something happens, they can get right out there and get it done. We've had a couple situations like that. And both road commissioners and past road commissioners have been great as far as getting a hold of one of us, just to say, "Hey, I've got an issue here, there, or wherever it may be, and we're headed out to do it." So, you know, there has been great communications. The road commissioners shall inspect all town roads, ways, and bridges each year and report to the selectmen and the road committee the status of the roads and needed repairs as of November 1st, and that's for budgeting purposes. We bounced back different dates for that, whether it should be done, you know, within 30 days of being elected or 30 days of town meeting. We figured by November 1st, it's starting to coincide with the budget process, so if they're out, that gives them from, you know, July 1st to November 1st, to get out, look at the roads, see exactly what the planning is for the, for the following year, so they can get some budget numbers put in. Go ahead if you want to. Pick them up.
Yeah, I just like to make a recommendation on your November 1st. When we were doing the budget season, usually, you know, the next year, you're going to, you know, figure out what you're going to do. Usually April 1st, when all the snow's melted away, you create, you have more problems than you had before.
This is true.
Winter time, where myself, I was making a recommendation, April 1st would be a better recommendation than November 1st.
For the following budget year?
Yeah, well, say like this year, okay? Right now, we should have had one, okay? But if you're doing it November 1st, then you have winter, you have to go through winter. And then you come into springtime, and you have roads that are all ripped up from the snowplows, this and that. Everything changes over that five-month period. That's why I'm saying, I would, I would make a recommendation that you do it April 1st or March 15th, or something in that area where, you know, because on the roads usually look a lot different.
Yeah, and they look different between March 15th and April 1st.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
I guess we just lumped that in with the, because of the, the records.
Yeah.
So, number 13, "The road commissioner shall maintain a complete and detailed maintenance and inventory log..." On November, you know, so that's, so...
We'll get to that.
Okay, go ahead.
If I may go back to the definition on line three of Tom Gore.
Sorry.
Three, one, the definition, the usual wording to describe an emergency is, instead of the word immediate, it's usually imminent.
Okay.
Hazard or endangerment. And the reason for that is that imminent does not mean immediate, but what it does mean is unpredictable.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
So I would suggest the insertion of that term.
Okay.
This is exactly why we're going through this tonight. We're down around number nine, I think.
Okay, so all projects, including but not limited to winter sand, paving, road repairs and construction, will be done only after the road commissioner submits a line item budget on the project to the selectmen, warrant and finance committee, and the road committee. All material shall be purchased in accordance with the Acton purchasing policy. Again, that's another item that, that line item budgeting has been brought up several times during our meetings. Next one talks about how to remove snow according to the main statutes. The road commissioner shall draft complete sections for specifications for any equipment that may be required to submit to the selectmen for review and approval. All equipment shall be purchased in accordance with the Acton purchasing policy.
Once again, we don't, per se, own a lot... Once again, we don't, per se, own a lot of equipment, other than barriers, cones, a couple of handhelds.
Signs.
Pieces of equipment, yep, signs.
The road commissioner will be responsible to the selectmen for the expenditure of monies spent on roads, bridges, culverts, sand and snow, and ice removal, showing in detail all monies paid out to whom and for what purpose. All purchases are to be done with the town's orders in accordance with the town purchasing policy.
That's actually being done now. It's with the, it has been in the past.
Yeah.
With the warrants that we sign.
Yeah, a lot of these are already being done, but just to get it down in writing.
Yep.
The road commissioners shall participate in the budget process for determining appropriations for the coming year. The road commissioner shall also submit an annual report to be included in the town annual report. I feel like I'm losing my voice.
I'll go next.
Sounds like it's going south.
Number 13. The road commissioner shall maintain a complete and detailed maintenance and inventory log on any town equipment used for road maintenance. And will submit these to the selectmen for an annual review by November 1st. We really don't have.
Once again, we don't have a lot, but the idea behind the November 1st was if you needed something different, you needed more signs, more barriers, more cones, whatever it may be for the upcoming budget year.
Number 14. The road commissioner shall document and approve all bills and specify to what project or equipment these bills are charged. Number 15.
Sorry, that was Tom's timer.
Number 15. The road commissioner and all employees of their department, both full and part-time, shall maintain and sign weekly time cards for all hours worked for the town. The road commissioner and employees shall work only those hours necessary to maintain town roads, ways, bridges, and equipment as required by these guidelines. 16. If a majority of the selectmen determine that a condition exists which creates a hazard or renders a way unsafe for motor vehicle traffic, they will give the road commissioner a written notice of the condition and order the road commissioner to address the situation within a 24-hour period. If the road commissioner fails to act as directed, a majority of the selectmen may take steps necessary to eliminate the hazard.
Dennis Long, you'll have to forgive me, I didn't bring my glasses tonight, but the section two, the first one. Repair of all roads and townways. I don't think the roads should be in there, because we have a lot of roads in town that aren't townways that the town has no authority over. I think it should be limited to just townways.
All townways?
Yeah.
So, because you're saying that roads could include private roads?
Yes.
Okay.
To be specific, it's just town.
Townways.
Just townways.
The other thing, the annual.
Town roads, ways.
Just to be clear, I'll be the person to ask, what's a townway? What's the difference between a townway and a townroad?
It's a piece of, to me, it's a piece of property that the town maintains.
Oh, that's what I thought. So parking lot, transportation.
And the public travels over.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
Just wanted to get out there.
My name's not Webster, but that was my interpretation.
Okay.
The other.
It's important to put town roads, townways, and bridges.
Or just townways and bridges.
Townways covers the roads.
Yep. It covers the transfer station, it covers parking lots. The other thing on the annual report. I think that these should be in by October 1st. I think that should be date-specific. Because if it's not, you might end up with not getting one, or getting one if you have your town reports already, and not get one until February.
How about November 1st?
We actually put a date on that when we asked for them.
That doesn't mean we got them at that point.
No, but I meant if it's in the ordinance.
Right, if it's in here.
Then it's date-specific.
Would November 1st be too late? I'm just trying to keep like.
What's that?
Would November 1st be too late, do you think?
Well, your first year, I mean, the year ends June 30th. There's absolutely no reason why you got July, August, September. A quarter of the year's gone, then anybody ought to be able to do a report for the year before, giving them three months to do it then.
True.
I think October 1st is plenty late. And I'm not sure where this was in here. You guys were talking earlier about Milton Mills Road and Fox's Ridge being where the townways, or where they aren't, or whatever. We also maintain a private way, which isn't covered in this. We've been doing it for a lot of years, and that's down on 13th Street. We don't do summer maintenance, but we do do winter maintenance. I think that somehow should be addressed in here. I'm not against doing it, I'm just saying.
It should be in here. 13th Street.
That we do it.
Okay.
Okay.
And there was one more thing, so I guess I'm going to have to think about it, and I'm going to have to come back up.
Thanks.
Okay, so what number are we at?
We left off, let's see.
I'm sorry, I was writing his notes down.
Around 14 or 15.
Oh, okay.
15, I think.
I think so, too.
Yeah. Once again, we're not reading them word for word. The folks can look down through.
Okay.
The other time card, one I think you did.
Oh, yes, we flipped over.
Okay, yeah, we flipped.
Yep.
Okay.
If I may, before you move on, the other thing was, the talking about a long-term plan. There really is no reason. Everybody else does at least a three-year. The fire department, the rec does it, the school department does it. There's really no reason why, between the road commissioners and the road committee, that they couldn't develop one so that the taxpayers have something to look at to see what they're looking forward to financially, and where the roads are going to be maintained. Because quite often, we're told that a road song's going to be done on a road, and for whatever reason, it changes. And five years later, that still isn't being done on the road, you know what I mean? Just because of priorities and stuff like that. But, so at least the people would have some kind of an expectation in writing what they voted on. Thank you.
Thanks.
Number 17. The road commissioner and all their employees of their departments, both full and part-time, shall comply with all provisions of the Acton personnel policy. 18. Maintain records as required by law. Keep the town roads, bridges, maintain safe, convenient for our motor vehicles. Removal of brush, trees, grass, snow and ice. These all have different statutes, MRSA, the numbers. Again, we've got to look into them, send it to legal. Must prevent damage to private water supplies as a result of construction, reconstruction, or maintenance of our public ways. Drains, ditches, culverts.
Basically, the things that they normally do on a day-to-day basis, just a little bit spelled out.
All right, this one right here. Look at number 20.
I think we had that one highlighted on our other sheet.
Yeah.
Continue to look at number 20.
We were going to get land use.
Yeah, so number 20, we still had some questions. Number 22 and 23, those were the three that, I guess she's moved the, I guess she's moved the numbers around, so it's 20 and 22 that we still have to work on.
Right, the public works, a registered professional engineer is required.
Right.
For any public works project exceeding $100,000 in work created, undue risk to the public. You can easily have a hot-top project that goes over $100,000. So we were, we were looking at some different wording for that one.
And the same thing with the driveway and culverts. In this, it states the municipality must install a culvert, and that was something that.
Land use was going to be involved in, to look at that, just to see. Tom?
Tom Gore. One area that I think should be addressed while this is being drafted is the issue of what happens when we have complete road failures in 50 years, or just short of 50 years, but I have lived in this town. There have been at least three years in which we had damage done to roads where they completely washed out. So we have questions of passability versus reconstruction. And Langley Shores Road was one of them, I think. Okay. And Milton Mills Road back in the 70s, totally washed out. So I think you would be wise to incorporate something in here to distinguish between creating a passable condition versus a complete road reconstruction. Okay? Obviously, the selectmen or somebody needs authority to make something passable, which may just mean backfilling with rock, or fill.
Right.
Okay? And getting it passable, one lane maybe, or whatever, and then the reconstruction be a separate act in some way, okay?
Thank you.
Number six kind of talks about that, but that could be expanded on.
All right, so number six. Number six here. Yeah, 20 and 23 we're still working on.
Yep.
And that's it.
Effective dates, the last page there is pretty self-explanatory. Once again, we will get confirmation what happens if it passes to the existing road commissioner. So, the one that has been appointed, so. Several people have been up. Anyone else want to come up and comment on what we have here? Once again, it's a work in progress, in going over it tonight with the road commissioners and the road committee. You know, we did find a few things that need to be addressed. Like Gavin had mentioned earlier, getting the comp plan involved. Some of that fell under number 20, when I talked about driveways and culverts, the comp plan, or not the comp plan, but the, folks downstairs.
Land use.
Land use, there we go. You know, there's wording already in place, we just need to tie the two together. Just like the comp plan, this path system needs to be tied to the comp plan, too. So. Anyone else have questions? Let's be some more.
I just want to say the effective date is reading wrong on here.
Is it?
Yeah, because this is going to be secret ballot vote, not at a town meeting.
Effective date.
Yep.
Right.
So, like Joyce had suggested, that it should be similar to, the road committee and the commissioners should be similar with the effective date and the terms of the people involved, currently involved.
Okay.
Arnold Murray.
Thank you.
I've read this to you before, and I'd like to reiterate it once again. This was a question asked of the Maine Municipal Association. We understand the legislature passed a law to clarify the relationship between municipal officers and the road commissioner. How will this change the situation? The legislature has attempted to alleviate this difficult situation by enacting Chapter 80, MRSA 23, Section 2701. This amendment clarifies that under the direction of a majority of the selectmen, the road commissioner is in charge of the repairs of the highways and the bridges within the town. This amended law specifically provides that in the absence of statute, charter, provisions of ordinance to the contrary, any decision involving the duties and responsibility of the road commissioner shall be made by a majority of the selectmen, whose decision is final. That 2701 is part of your new road ordinance. It was written in 1985. That's been the law since 1985. I have no qualms with what you've written, but I went and checked all these statutes here, and they've been in force for quite a while. Only one was, has an amendment in 2017, that's number 22, highway defects. It doesn't state what the amendment was, but I'm just saying, these have been in law for a long time. My question is, while I have one, one other thing that I, the interpretation in the end of this says, the words and phrases, specific provisions of this ordinance shall be the responsibility of the selectmen. Does that mean you're going to define the words, what the words mean? We will use Merriam-Webster as the final, what words mean.
Well, I myself am nowhere near a dictionary, so.
I know.
I would have to rely on a dictionary or something.
It just seems strange to me that that's.
Yeah, that probably could almost be stricken, but.
That was.
The MRSA you had mentioned is actually Section 2, Item 1, listed right in this ordinance.
I know. And that's my, my point was, you people have said before that you had no authority over the road commissioners, and you did have. It's been in vogue for a long time. What's going to be, now that it's in the ordinance, what's going to be different going on? It's been the law. I mean, it's not new, it's, I don't know.
My hopes is, is by having something like this in print, and something that has been drawn up for the town of Acton, it may just help make it cleaner and easier.
Tom Gore, again, with reference to the meaning of words, there are a number of commonly accepted legal dictionaries, the most famous of which is Black's Law Dictionary. So if you're looking for definitions, that's the place to go. That is generally accepted as the standard, the gold standard.
Thank you. Anyone else have some comments? This is quite good, this is what we like. We need to have the interaction. Gavin?
Gavin Maloney. I got a quick one, just following up on what Dennis said, number 21. Town road or townway defects must correct defects in the road where there's been 24-hour notice, or can be held liable for resulting damages. So my first thing was, maybe we should strike road in the second sentence, because must correct defects in the road, well, like Dennis said, townways aren't just roads, so this would allow the road commissioner to not repair a parking lot with the 24-hour notice, if you left it like that.
True.
Okay.
And are you also saying that the road commissioner would be held liable for the resulting damage?
Not sure whether, we'd have to look at the definition there, but I think it's more likely the town.
Town.
Right, I just would like to see that clarified in this, number 21, because it says, all it says is must correct and/or can be held, so it, it's kind of ambiguous. And then, also, just somewhere in this, it should say that the road commissioners are members of the road committee, since you just amended that in the other ordinance. You're going to want to throw that into this ordinance.
Yeah, we could, I mean, the other one does say it, but we could put it in here.
And then you're going to want to say if they're going to need to attend every meeting, or something like that as well. I mean, if they're on the committee.
Yeah, they're voting members of the committee.
It's expected that they should go to every meeting, but maybe you could reiterate it in here, or just put it in there that they are voting members who are on the committee or something like that.
That's a good idea.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm just kind of, yep. Road officials being around with the road committee, and attend meetings.
Anyone else? No? If there is no one else, going once, going twice, going three times. I guess at this point, do you have anything else you'd like to add to this?
No. I think we had a great workshop earlier, and thank you.
Thank you for everybody's help and input.
Yep, very much so. It was a very good, very good evening, actually, for getting this, getting these documents together. None of these are going to be perfect, they weren't perfect right out of the gate, they're not going to be perfect if, in fact, they're voted in June. But they'll give us a really good start and a really good basis. And as years go ahead, we'll change and do what we need to do to upgrade them and update them. So with that, I guess I will go one more time. Not seeing anyone, I guess we will close the public hearing, and we thank everyone for coming tonight.
Good night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.